Four or five decisions in a row.
Wait a minute, before we move. Continuance.
No, it's a deadline extension.
Right, so we're hearing that one now.
Okay, but it's okay that we don't.
Yes.
That it's still printed in here as February.
I was wondering why it was up on the panel.
All right, I didn't understand.
I didn't understand it either.
Okay, we have an extension, but we do have a hearing.
Yes.
Mr. Ahment, are you here for the hearing?
Thank you. As you know, I represent JJE C Development. I just have one comment which I wasn't planning to say, but I will before you vote on the proposed motion, which the town planner has been so kind to share with me ahead. One of the issues we've had is the requirement of the engineering department to put granite curbing all the way to the property line. And the decision will require compliance with getting a curb cut permit. Getting a curb cut permit will require satisfying the engineering department. But I want to point out that there is no granite curbing in front of the DPW building on Gifford Street. The granite curbing ends in front of Homeport at the second driveway. It doesn't continue further to the north to the property line. There is no granite curbing surrounding the Courtyard Apartments, a relatively recent construction, at the intersection of Sandwich Road and Brick Hill Road. I don't know how much more expensive the granite curbing costs for the short distance, relatively short distance, from the curb cut to the subject property to the northern property line. I'm appreciative that the planning board is not going to require a sidewalk to continue there that leads to nowhere. This is a town road of an existing developed lot. If the town feels that there should be granite curbing on both sides of Sandwich Road, or the town should go put it in. Granite curbing is on the other side of the road, but it doesn't continue all the way to Brick Hill Road. I don't know whether the requirement to spend the money for granite curbing as opposed to a Cape Cod berm will make the difference between whether this housing project goes forward or not. But I thought I would just point out my feeling that I don't think that that requirement ought to be in play here. Thank you.
May I ask Bob a question?
Sure.
Bob?
Mr. Ahment.
Could you, can we bring it back up? He had it all up, and I was going to say, where's the granite curbing?
Right along the side of the houses.
How long is it?
Madam Chair, if I may.
How about that?
Just want to remind the board that the engineering referral is in your packet, and that's where the requirement.
The requirement is right.
Ahment is referring to.
So the granite curbing presently ends around here, and the applicant has agreed to extend it the 56 feet up to where it would end at the south side of this curb cut. We're also going to install sidewalk, redo the sidewalk with a tactile pad for handicap access at the curb cut. We're also going to have, as you know, it shows on this plan, a walkway that extends to the town layout and then turns, and we'll also have a tactile pad here. The question is the requirement to put in granite curbing from this location to the property line. That's all.
Bob, have you talked with the engineering department to ask why they want you to do that?
I have not. I have expressed my concern or preference on behalf of my client, basically to save money, to the town planner, and I believe the town planner has passed along that concern to the engineering department. And the engineering department, which wants the best for the town, wants that granite curbing. But at some point, the cost of every additional improvement makes it harder and harder to develop housing. And in many places.
That's why I'm asking the question as to whether you have talked directly to them.
No, I have not talked directly to the engineering department. And it may be that in the future, that is, in the months to come, as we see if this project will go forward and what the, and we have figures and so on, maybe we'll have further discussion with the town about it. I don't want to hold up site plan review approval. I just think that this is a case where the right answer would have been to, no, you don't have to continue the granite curbing past the curb cut because there's no more granite curbing anywhere on this property all the way to Brick Hill Road. That is on the west side of Sandwich Road.
Well, you raised two good issues. There's a fairness issue, and there's a consistency issue. And we were just receiving training tonight on consistency in the way we approach things. So it's right on time. So it might be good to bring it up in the meantime.
Can I clarify something?
Mm-hmm.
So when we talked with the engineering department, they let us know that because of the road opening permit for the aprons, that that work right in that area is considered in the right-of-way and not site-specific. So that is why they have the requirement, regardless of what we say for our site plan review, they are going to require that for their road opening permit.
Well, I understand we can't change that.
Right, so I'm just clarifying where that kind of came from and why it's part of this.
But the piece north isn't in their road opening, though.
That's where the apron is, that they're closing. So that's.
Well, there's an apron right there, but from there on to the next lot, that's not part of their permit, is it?
There's two aprons there that they.
Oh, we're closing out an old one that's there. I forgot. Oh, there's that old parking, there used to be like a parking lot in there. I forgot. I remember that now.
Because they're changing that.
Yeah, that, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's a reason for that going in. Because right now, you could drive in there and park cars.
Well, that area is going to be landscaped.
Right, it's going to be changed.
And it could be a Cape Cod berm, much less expensive than granite curbing.
That's why, I understand now. I didn't think they should care, but they are changing that.
Yeah.
Are we ready to move on?
I do want to note, just for the record, that that area is also, and I hadn't thought of this before, but that area is a potential area where kids might be getting onto a bus in the future. So I think engineering's, although I won't speak for them, they're thinking perhaps could be, you know, safety for any children that might be waiting in that area so a car can't just jump the curb or jump.
Well, kids also get on the bus at all sorts of intersections along Sandwich Road and every other road in town, and there's, and they must get on the bus somewhere near the Courtyard Apartments as well. And I'm sure there are many other examples I could have given, including recent construction, and it doesn't seem to be consistent. Thanks.
Do we have to repeat our vote to accept the change in the deadline?
I don't see why we would.
No.
No, so there is a new deadline, and this is the end of the public meeting.
Yeah, right.
May I also just go over a couple of changes that the engineering department has indicated in their referral?
Yes.
So very quickly, it's in relation to the driveway entrance and the circulation on the site. So as you can see, this is the entrance itself. The engineering division indicated that these double arrows, as shown by the cursor, could pro, basically encourage visitors to the site to think that there are two lanes for folks to line up in in this area, which would not meet the zoning bylaw requirements for spacing in between parking areas. So I've communicated with Attorney Ahment about removing the dashed line that you can see here to approximately this location, past the angle parking, and just remove one of the arrows to indicate that this is just a single lane entrance. And additionally here. So again, this is meant to indicate this is just a one-way, but some people could misconstrue that to be two lanes coming through that, which would not satisfy. So it's going to be single arrow here, single, single, and then the dash line would likely not start until about this area. So those changes will be made further on. I don't believe it affects your decision unless, of course, you have an issue with it tonight. You can simply vote your draft motion into the record indicating that you give me the ability to administratively put that into the decision afterward.
On March 12th?
Sorry?
On March 12th.
Yeah, I don't have a specific date exactly when that would happen, but likely around the time that the zoning board of appeals is also looking for a final decision. So that you don't hold up your approval this evening. You don't make them come back just to show you those simple changes.
I'm not sure I'm understanding you. Our approval tonight was for extending the deadline to March 12th, and I'm assuming we're not going to read the draft decision into the record tonight.
You certainly can. I think you're in a spot where you can, provided that you're okay with those changes that I've just highlighted. And those changes will result in a revised plan so that you'll have a revision date that won't match exactly.
I'm glad I asked a question.
And then you're going to approve that plan administratively.
Correct.
Yeah, so if I could just clarify.
You better be good at measuring arrows and making sure they're for the right spot.
On the agenda, the deadline decisions in the past. So even, so we have to make it current.
Oh.
So that's why you already did.
I'm catching up with you.
Yeah.
I think I'm almost there.
Okay.
Plenty of discussion. Is any comment on the engineering report and what the changes made in response? Any questions or comment, any problem?
So are we reading it in and voting tonight as well?
Yes, we are going to, it would seem. But we are ready for that?
And for the record.
Yeah.
The site plan that's referenced in that draft motion, you'll see that the site plan has a date and a revision date. That revision date will be reflective of when they revise the plan that's shown on the screen to cover the changes that I just referenced.
Okay, good, but we can go ahead and do it now. So Bob?
Okay, draft, February 24th, 2025, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of JJE C Development LLC for the construction of 10 two-bedroom apartments and five duplex buildings located at 4 Sandwich Road under Section 240 12.2 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw with the following findings and conditions. The two-acre lot is located in the business 2B2 zoning district in the Coastal Pond, Great Pond Overlay District. A 2,700-plus-or-minus-square-foot Dunkin' Donuts restaurant with a drive-through window and 30 parking spaces are currently located on the lot. The applicant is proposing to construct 10 two-bedroom apartments in five duplex buildings located on the undeveloped portion of the two-acre lot. Each duplex building is proposed to be 2,441 square feet and contains two two-bedroom apartment units proposed at 1,174 square feet and 1,267 square feet, respectively. The applicant is proposing several changes to the existing driveway entrance and parking lot layout to accommodate this new use. Specifically, the driveway entrances will work, will include new vertical granite curbing, where missing along the site frontage, approximately 56 feet of the sidewalk, repaved along the site frontage south of the existing curb cut and curb ramps with tactile warning panels for pedestrians. Pedestrian crossings, both existing site aprons will be removed and landscaped to eliminate those potential access points. Meanwhile, the parking lot layout modifications will include the addition of six new angled parking spaces on the south side of the Dunkin' Donuts building, the addition of three new parallel parking spaces next to the existing parking island, changing the existing 15 parking spaces on the northern portion of the site to angled spaces. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to reduce the number of seats inside the Dunkin' Donuts restaurant from 26 to 18, and therefore reduce the number of parking spaces required for that use to 18 spaces. The new and reconfigured parking spaces will provide a total of 39 parking spaces to accommodate both uses on the site. The applicant is proposing to install a nitro, denitrification septic system to serve the new residences and the Dunkin' Donuts restaurant. Although there were no letters of opposition received during the board's public meetings, several abutters voiced concerns related to the new residential use, the proposed screening for their properties, and the anticipated demand on the property. To address these concerns, the applicant increased the number of proposed trees to a total of 92, 58 screening trees, 20 flowering trees, 14 shade trees, reduced the size of the proposed play area to leave more buffer for the residential abutters, and shifted the fencing around the play area away from the budding properties, leaving room for existing and future plantings. The town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned application. The planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments. The planning board's review and approval does not include building code and zoning review, and the board defers to that, to the building commissioner. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Street opening permit, the applicant shall obtain a street opening permit from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division. The project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters or public right-of-way. The erosion and sediment control construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Utilities, any connections or alterations of public utility shall require permission from the appropriate town department. The applicant shall see the engineering division for address assignment for the new buildings prior to applying for a building permit. The project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Lapse pursuant to Section 240 12.2 of the zoning bylaw, this site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date, from the date it is granted. If substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for a good cause, the determination, good cause, shall be made by the planning board.
Second. And I'd also like to make a comment for our viewing public that the entirety of the decision is available in the planning office for them to see.
Very good, okay. Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed.
I got two opposed.
Two opposed? Two opposed?
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay. Could I make a comment also? Some time ago, we changed, by the board's request, from reading entire findings, the entire motion, into the record because much of it is standard language. So that locating, identifying the project is very important so that people here and on TV know exactly what project we're dealing with, some general description of where it's going to be so that they know that. Any findings that seem to be particularly important, for instance, the number of new buildings, the number, the change of use, that would be important. But much of it is standard language. And great interest to the applicant, to the applicant's professionals working with them, to the planning board, to the building commissioner, but not necessarily to the general public. So we tried to cut down on the length of time it took to read the motions, and I see it creeping back up. Particularly when I look at the standard conditions, they're all the standard conditions. So I'm just asking you to keep that in mind next time around.
I think the waivers are important, but most of the stuff, the standard stuff, I don't.
I think it's important, so what's important in your process is that you understand that standard conditions to you are knowledgeable, but to the public have no idea what a standard condition is. That's why we try to, especially with the conditions, make them, for the most part, readable into the record because of that very fact. So your role is to ensure that the public is aware of how you're making this decision and some of the requirements that you're placing onto the decision.
Correct, but the exact, and I think public education is a very important role for the board. That's quite true.
Yeah.
But for example, it would be enough understanding conditions, if you take a look at them, to say standard stormwater conditions, to name the kind of condition and the general gist of the condition without having to do all the exact language. It just isn't necessary. And I don't actually think it's effective education either because it's being read rather quickly, fortunately, and into a record. I don't think people listening can actually take it in.
I agree with that. I don't even take it in. I've already read it so many times, it's.
Happy to work it through with you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
As you know, I'm a detail guy.
We're grateful. Somebody needs to be, so this, that's good.
I did edit some of it.
It's hard. It's hard to select which ones are important enough to read and which ones aren't.
It is.
But happy to work through that with you.
Thank you, okay. Moving on.
I noticed that creep too. I was wondering what was going on.
You know, everything is turning blue. Okay, moving on. Next, we have a series of decisions. The first one, Steven Marsh, definitive plan application to create a three-lot subdivision at 0 Old Barnstable Road. And we have that.
Ready to go, Bob. Get a queue done.
Bob, are you sure you want to keep reading?
Yeah, yeah.
You can trade around.
Yeah. Draft, February 24th, 2025, motion that the planning board votes to approve on the application of Steve Marsh under Article 4, Definitive Plans, Chapter 305, Subdivision Regulations of the Town of Falmouth, a three-lot definitive subdivision plan located at 0 Barnstable Road, assesses parcel ID 2006049A000 with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. The vacant, the 9.76 acre parcel is vacant undisturbed land located at 0 Barnstable Road at the end of Catawba Lane in East Falmouth. The property is located in the Agricultural AAGA zoning district, Coastal Pond, Wacoit Bay Overlay District, Water Resource Protection Overlay District, and the Wildlife Carta Overlay District, migration area 1. On May 1st, 2024, the applicant submitted a definitive subdivision plan application with the planning board for the creation of a three-lot subdivision located at 0 Barnstable Road, 2006049A000. Two of the three newly created properties, parcel A and parcel B, will remain undisturbed and be restricted for, from future development through a conservation restriction while the remaining property, Lot 1, will be developed with a single-family home. Roadways and sideways, access to Lot 1 will be created by extending the existing 19-foot-wide private paved cul-de-sac roadway, Catawba Lane, by approximately 140 feet and terminating in a T-style turnaround. The applicant is proposing to match the existing roadway characteristics of Catawba Lane to nine-foot, by terminus, concrete travel lanes with six inches of berms on either side and no sidewalk for the extension. Board finds that the proposed improvements will be adequate for the proposed use of Lot 1, and a standard subdivision roadway would be inconsistent with the character of the area. Drainage, the definitive plan includes the extension of the town's eight-inch water main in Catawba Lane from its current terminus at the end of the proposed T-turnaround, the installation of a fire hydrant at the T-turnaround area underground electric and communication service, and a stormwater infiltration system. Wastewater municipal sewer service is not available for the area, therefore, the applicant will need to meet the requirements of the Board of Health for wastewater collection and treatment. Planning board did not receive a report on the Board of Health as required under GL 441-S81U within the statutory time limit. Therefore, the Board of Health approval is by failure, is by failure to report. As this roadway extension does not meet the town subdivision design standards, municipal snow plowing and trash pickup will not be provided. The applicant provided testimony at the public hearings that those services would not be required in the future. Waiver, Section 305, 11C3, traverse tables, Section 305, 24B, width alignment and grades, Section 305, 24C, street cross-section, Section 305, 30 sidewalks, grass plots and street trees, Section 305, 34, street lights. Conditions: Covenant prior to endorsement of the definitive plan, a covenant or bond ensuring completion of the roadway and utilities shall be submitted to the planning board for approval. Utilities installations of proposed water main and associated hydrants shall be approved by installed under the direction of the Falmouth Water Department and Fire and Rescue Department. Electrical service, the electrical service for Lot 1 shall be placed underground, shall be installed per the specific utility company standards. Erosion and sediment control of projects should comply with the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Street opening permit, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit or street opening permit. Future subdivision, no further subdivision shall occur without a modification of the decision by the Falmouth planning board. Rights of others, the board's approval of this subdivision plan does not constitute and should not be deemed by or construed as an approval of any activity which may interfere with or violate rights of other parties. Pre-construction meeting, specific condition, stormwater management permit, the applicant shall file a stormwater management permit and fee with the Department of Public Works Engineering Division prior to any land disturbances. Conservation restriction, parcel A and parcel B shall be protected in perpetuity through a conservation restriction in accordance with mass general law, see Section 184, Section 3235. The conservation restriction shall be recorded at the Barnstable Registry Deeds and a copy of which shall be provided to the planning board.
Second.
I have a question.
May I second it, discussion?
I heard something that I don't think we ever discussed before, at least I never heard it. I don't think I've missed any meetings. But we're not providing snow plowing and trash pickup, and we do that on private roads throughout the whole town. I've never heard that as an exception before, and I don't remember it being discussed at this meeting. Where did that come in? Is that something that was added without discussion?
Jim, we don't provide it on private roads.
It's always been true. They provide it if they can and if they want to.
It's come.
What?
If I may.
I know plenty of private roads.
Yes.
You're wrong when you say that, okay?
No, ours is a private road. It's been plowed for years.
Right.
But the newer ones that we've approved, we've said no.
This language, I have never heard it discussed, and it's just been put into a decision. This language, I have never heard it discussed, and it's just been put into a decision, and I disagree with it, and I just, how does that happen? One reason maybe we should read these things.
Wait, wait, let him answer.
So it was included in the engineering referral dating back to the original proposal. So it was, as you know, there's a lot of information in those engineering referrals. But it's because the applicant isn't proposing the roadway to meet town standards. So anytime that the DPW sees that or the engineering division, it flags it and says, because it doesn't meet town standards, services would not be provided. Now, because of that, I reached out to the applicant, made sure that he was okay with that, and he had indicated that he had spoken to that in previous meetings before the...
But there's thousands, hundreds of roads in Seaco Shore. Some of them are dirt. They don't meet town standards at all, and we pick up trash and snow plowing.
Correct.
And we always have.
And they're old.
And I just, they're old. They've been there for a long time.
Absolutely. And you're right, there's plenty of examples in town where we're currently providing those services. This is a new directive that the DPW is enforcing now because there are so many issues with those private roads in town. So from that point forward, and it was part of Peter McConaty's update to the select board not long ago, meet town standards, you can get these services if you don't.
The DPW is enforcing this, okay? It's not just a recommendation. They're making the decision to do this, not us.
Correct. Correct. So we are...
I thought it was our decision. I didn't realize that was their decision.
Well, we're working...
I'm mistaken.
It's fine. So what we do is we work with the applicant in every situation, and we say, look, if you want these services, then you just need to meet town standards. And the applicant has the ability to do so.
To do that if they want.
Yes. And they can waive these services if they, if they so choose by just not having town standards. But we make them aware of it. We just, sorry, we just ran into it with the previous subdivision that we were dealing with on Lewis Street, so.
So, so what are the standards? Eighteen feet width and sidewalk? Is that what?
Standard is twenty-two feet wide. And that's inclusive of two twelve inch berms on either side.
Okay.
And that's what they have to do to get trash pickup?
Correct. And importantly, snow plowing.
Snow plowing, yeah.
Right. Snow plowing, they have to meet the town subdivision standards. And, you know, again, in this case, they, they just didn't meet that.
And a lot of the ones that we've done...
I'm going to enforce that on all the other streets in town that don't do that. Isn't that kind of a selective enforcement?
I don't think that they're going back. I don't want to speak for DPW, but my understanding is that they're not going to go back to the ones that are currently getting the services and say, you're no longer getting it. However, there are some circumstances, as, as Peter mentioned at that briefing with the select board, that they have to enter into these private ways that folks have allowed the vegetation to grow in, they've allowed potholes to form, and it damages town equipment. And they need to make sure that they are able to get a plow in there.
So do we plow, was it tower, how, the road in West Falmouth? And do we do trash pickup on the one we just approved a lot there?
Fire Tower Road?
Fire Tower Road.
I, I don't know.
This isn't really a discussion that we... Could we, could we stop this?
Okay. I was just taken aback. I hadn't heard this discussed at the meeting before. It's a surprise.
I think we've now covered it sufficiently so we can understand it and how it originated and why it's being done, but I think we ought to get back to business, and we have...
Okay, I'm sorry. I just hadn't heard it discussed before.
That's okay. We've got a motion. It's been seconded. Have we completed the discussion? Is there anything else about the motion you want to talk about? No. In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Six unanimous rather than two to four. Moving on. James S. Hall, on behalf of Prizilla, J. Nguyen trustee, definitive plan modification application to make roadway and utility improvements at zero forty-five Hall Lane and three forty-five Old Barnstable Road. So, Bob, are you still willing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, here we go.
I was a teacher, remember? I talked all day.
Yeah. We know now that, that the, the part marked in blue to read is going to be reduced, so if you see an opportunity as you read...
Yeah.
And it's easy for you, you could do that also.
Yeah. And they're going to be in red from now on, so it's easier for me to...
Oh, okay.
Okay. Draft, February twenty third, twenty twenty five. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of James S. Hall under Article four, definitive plans, chapter three oh five subdivision regulations of the town of Falmouth, to modify a three lot definitive subdivision plan located zero and forty-five Hall Lane and three forty-five Old Barnstable Road, assesses parcel ID twenty eight zero eight zero zero two zero zero two A, two eight zero eight zero zero two zero zero three, two eight zero eight zero zero two zero zero one, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. The five point six acre three lot subdivision is located in the agricultural A, A G A zoning district, the coastal pond, Born's Pond overlay district, and the, in the wildlife carter overlay district, mitigation area one. Two of the lots originally approved by the planning board and a definitive subdivision plan decision on August fifteenth, nineteen eighty-nine, lot one of, or three forty-five Old Barnstable Road, and lot three, or forty-five Hall Lane, have been developed with single family homes, while the rest, the real lot, lot two A, or zero Hall Lane, is currently vacant undisturbed land. The nineteen eighty-nine definitive subdivision plan included a note on lot two A that read, lot two A not to be built upon until the road is constructed to subdivision control law standards. The subdivision plan modification application with the planning board to modify the nineteen eighty-nine decision by removing the note on the approved plan, which will allow lot two A to become a buildable lot. That was on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The applicant does not seek to further subdivide lot two A, rather, the intent is to develop said lot with a single family home. Lot one, three forty-five Old Barnstable Road, and lot three, forty-five Hall Lane, shall remain unchanged. The current applicant intends to keep the roadway gravel, extend it to lot two A, and improve its conditions, add two-foot grass shoulders on both sides for the entire stretch, create a T-style turnaround at the terminus, and to clear back vegetation along the entire roadway to provide an unobstructed horizontal width of no less than twenty feet and an unobstructed vertical clearance of no less than thirteen feet six inches. The board finds that the proposed improvements will be adequate for the proposed use of lot two A and a standard subdivision roadway would be inconsistent with the character of the area. The definitive plan modification includes the extension of a two-inch town water service through a utility easement from Putter Drive, the abutting subdivision to the north. Additionally, electric service and natural gas will be extended from the existing terminus on Hall Lane to lot two A to serve the future single family home. Although not required by the town's water department or the fire department, the applicant intends to install a fire hydrant at the end of the roadway extension in the area of the T-turnaround. Municipal sewer service is not available in the area, therefore, the applicant will need to meet the requirements of the board of health for wastewater collection and treatment. The planning board did not receive a report from the board of health as required under GLC forty-one S eighty-one U within the statutory time limit, therefore, the board of health approval is by failure to report. As this roadway extension does not meet the town subdivision design standards, municipal snow plowing and trash pickup will not be provided. Waivers. Section three oh five dash eleven C two profile plan, section three oh five eleven C three traverse tables, section three oh five eleven C four drainage analysis, section three oh five eleven C seven impact statement, section three oh five twelve definitive plan requirements, section three oh five fourteen environmental impact statement, sections three oh five twenty-four B one B and three oh five twenty-four B one E width alignment and grades, section three oh five twenty-four C street cross section, section three oh five twenty-four D two dead end street length, section three oh five twenty-four D three paved turnaround, section three oh five twenty-four F drainage, section three oh five thirty sidewalks, grass plots, and street trees, section three oh five thirty-one utilities, section three oh five thirty-four streetlights, section three oh five thirty-five street and roadway construction conditions. Covenant prior to endorsement of the definitive plan, a covenant or bond ensure completion of the roadway and utility shall be submitted to the planning board for approval. Utilities installation. Proposed water service extension, the fire hydrant shall be approved by installed under the direction of the Falmouth Fire Department and Fire Rescue Department. Gas and electrical services, the future gas and electric services for lot two A shall be placed underground and shall be installed per the specific utility company standards. Erosion and sediment control, the progress shall comply with the town soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document. Further subdivisions. No further subdivision shall occur without a modification of this decision by the Falmouth Planning Board. Rights of others. Pre-construction meeting. Parking in a T-turnaround, at no time shall parking of any vehicles be permitted within the T-turnaround at the area at the end of the road well, what, roadway. Roadway clearance, an unobstructed horizontal width of the less than twenty foot and an unobstructed vertical clearance of no less than thirteen feet six inches on Hall Lane shall be maintained at all times in perpetuity. Wildlife carter maintenance. Any further development on lot two A shall include consultation with the town's marine and environmental services, therefore, division before any land disturbance issuance of a building permit.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have the same discussion. There's houses on Hall Lane is a non-conforming road. It doesn't meet town standards. There's houses there that currently get trash service and snow plowing. You're going to tell them they're no longer going to get it anymore?
Well, I'm not a hundred percent certain that they're getting those services currently.
Well, we should check because I think, this is a problem. It's, I think that there's a lot of people that are...
I understand.
I think this is an issue that we missed. I missed it. There's tons of, I mean, it's a little dirt. They're not changing, it's a non-conforming road. And I'm pretty sure, if they're not, these people are going to be dragging their trashcans way out to Sandwich Road. Okay? I'm sure...
I understand.
I think it warrants more of a conversation than just allowing it to be slapped in. Let it go for now, but I like to discuss that and know how big a problem this really is. Maybe it's only one or two streets. But I tell people all the time, because private roads, you're paying taxes, you should get the same services. And I say that to my real estate clients all the time. And now I'm going to say, no more. And that's, I think it's a big change. I missed it. I should have caught it.
I wonder if the trash trucks have something to do with it because of the mechanical arm and the requirements for height and all that.
It's also, it's the DPW's...
I see the trash truck back down Pin Oak Way every morning. Okay? Anyways...
Add it to a future agenda item?
Yeah.
Yes, I think a future agenda item. It's an important issue. It does matter to a lot of people. I live on a private road. I would be affected by it, so I agree it's important.
What, they don't plow your road? How would you like to have to pay that all the way to the main road? Carry your trash all the way out there?
They don't plow my road, but they do the trash. So I think it varies. And what I heard is they're not going to change what they're doing now for existing situations, but in new situations, which this would be, then they might start enforcement. But it has now become an agenda item for discussion so we can go forward.
I apologize for not catching it earlier. I know it's been in all the reports. I just skipped over it.
I'm glad that you caught it. We'll come back to it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is snow plowing and rubbish removal in our purview?
We're taking it away.
Well...
If it isn't in our pur, if it is not in our purview, I don't want to discuss it. I don't have a meeting about it. I don't, I don't want to spend my time on it. I don't think it's in our purview.
When you're considering a definitive plan, I believe it's in your purview because it is a town service that these new residents would essentially expect, if you will. And you're creating a new roadway, and so it's important for the applicant to understand that there are certain town services, according to the town, that would not be eligible for this current proposal unless they meet the town standards. So I think it is within your purview.
So during site plan review, if a non-standard roadway is part of the site plan and is going to go forward, they should understand that they're not going to automatically get...
Right.
...town services on that road. Not, yeah, by implication, it's there.
For subdivision.
Right. For, only for definitive subdivision plans.
Right.
Not for site plan review.
So I, I don't believe it's, I believe it's up to DPW to decide which roads do and don't, but we should put in our decision what that is, if it is or isn't, to clarify what DPW says.
Through the referral.
Right.
So the referral comes through from DPW, essentially the engineering division, who is responsible for maintaining a list of roadways that they do plow and create...
Well, we will continue to see this language.
Because we determine access, and sometimes the DPW doesn't even get involved on a road that we say is accessible and that the building can put a building permit on and it can get built, and it doesn't even have to go to these guys.
I, I think Charlotte's right. We'll put it on a future agenda.
Okay. I'm just saying, there's more here than just one little piece.
That's why we're going to put it on another agenda.
Okay.
So is there a discussion that doesn't involve that question? In which case, let's go ahead. It's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Another six to zero. Moving forward. Our next decision will be about Patrick Goncal's application, a site plan review application to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at three thirty-nine Brick Kiln Road.
Okay. February twenty first, twenty twenty five. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Patrick Goncal's to permit an existing detached accessory dwelling unit located at three thirty-nine Brick Kiln Road under section two forty twelve point two site plan review of the zoning bylaw with the following findings and conditions. The property, the unit will be twenty-two point eight percent of the principal dwelling, which complies with section two forty nine point one C five of the zoning bylaw. The submitted site plan shows a paved asphalt driveway for the principal dwelling and a gravel parking area for the accessory dwelling unit, which together provide the necessary parking space for both structures. Architectural style and building elevations, floor plans. The applicant demonstrated that both the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit predate the adoption of the water resource protection overlay district, therefore, according to section two forty nine point one C eight of the zoning bylaw, the applicant is permitted to retain the current bedroom count on that lot, but cannot increase that count in the future without connecting to the town sewer system or installing an innovative alternative septic system. There were no letters of opposition received or comments made during the board's public meeting. Planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments. Board's review and approval does not include building code and zoning review, and the board defers to the building commissioner. Conditions. The plan shall be permitted as presented and approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of the decision is necessary. Standard conditions, stormwater, standard condition utilities, standard condition dressing. The applicant shall post the address for this building per section ninety-nine one of the town code. Building code. The building, the project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Standard condition, ADU rental, you, ADU rental, rental period shall be not less than six months and weekly monthly payments. So-called summer rents, as I expressly prohibited. Lapse pursuant to section two forty two point two of the zoning bylaw, the site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for a good cause, a determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Do you recall that we complimented him, Mr. Goncal's, on a very nice application? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Now we come to the applicant, Joseph F. Als, site plan review application to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit at seven Carlton Circle. Bob, you're still going?
Yeah. Draft, February twentieth, twenty twenty five. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Jose F. Als for converting of Jose F. Als for converting an existing attached two-car garage into a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 7 Carlton Circle under Section 240 12.2 Site Plan Review and Zoning Bylaw with the following findings and conditions. The applicant is proposing to convert the attached two-car garage into a one-bedroom 450-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. The unit will be 28.62% of the principal dwelling, which complies with Section 249.1(c)(5) of the zoning bylaw. The submitted site plan shows a paved asphalt driveway which provides the necessary parking space for both the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit. There were no letters of opposition received or comments made during the board's public The applicant intends to remove a bedroom on the second floor of the principal dwelling by removing the door and creating a 48-inch cased opening to comply with Section 249.1(c) of the zoning bylaw. The planning board's review and approval does not include building code and zoning review, and the board defers to the building commissioner. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Section 249.1 and 240 12.2 of the zoning bylaw. The plan shall be constructed, conditions, the plan shall be constructed as approved, any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification, this decision is necessary. Standard condition stormwater, this project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, but as a public right of way. Standard condition utilities, standard condition addressing, the applicant, the applicant shall post the address for this building per Section 99.1 of the town code. Standard condition building code, the project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Standard condition ADU rental period shall not be less than six months in weekly monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals are expressly prohibited. Conditions, standard condition seven, lapse pursuant to Section 240 12.2 of the zoning bylaw, the site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not soon commenced except for a good cause, a determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone wish to comment or ask a question? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Als' proposal is approved. We come to our last. This is an applicant by David Clary, Site Plan Review Application to Construct a Detached Accessory Dwelling Unit at 14 Inlet Lane.
Ready?
Ready.
Draft, February 21st, 2025, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of David Clary for the construction of a detached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit and a portion of an existing detached garage located at 14 Inlet Lane under Section 240 12.2 Site Plan Review Zoning Bylaw with the following findings and conditions. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story, 768-square-foot, one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit within the detached two-car garage. This new dwelling unit will be located next to the garage space and will include living space on two floors. The 768-square-foot accessory dwelling unit will be 14.9% of the principal dwelling, which complies with Section 249.1(c)(5) of the zoning bylaw. The submitted site plan shows a detached two-car garage and a paved asphalt driveway which provides the necessary parking space for both the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit. The existing septic system is suitable for five bedrooms and an innovative alternative septic system is not required as the lot size exceeds, as the lot size exceeds that requirement threshold. Architectural style, building elevations, the architectural effect is incidental to and the same as character as the existing primary. There were no letters of opposition received nor comments made during the board's public meeting. The town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned application. The planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments. Planning Board's review and approval does not include building code and zoning review, and the board defers to that to the building commissioner. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Section 249.1 and 240 12.2 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Stormwater, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, but as a public right of way. Utilities, any connection or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Standard condition addressing, the applicant shall post the address for this building per Section 99-1 of the town code. Standard condition building code, the project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Standard condition ADU rental, rental periods shall not be less than six months in weekly monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals are expressly prohibited. And standard condition lapse pursuant to Section 240 12.2 of the zoning bylaw, the site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not soon commenced except for good cause. The determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that is approved. And Mr. Clary, that clears us of our regular business, and we're now to a discussion. Planning Department report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're happy to report that the final version of the open space and recreation plan was submitted to the state for their review and consideration, and fingers crossed approval. We have received some back and forth, but I believe that we're in good standing, so we're hopeful that that review will be done expeditions.
When we're approved, what does that make us eligible for?
Well, first and foremost, a park grant, which I am neglecting to know the acronym of what it stands for, but it's acquisition. Essentially, state grants that allow the community to purchase land with money that is allowed by, or provided by the state. That's first and foremost. And then, of course, other state grants that we might be able to refer to the open space plan in support of, but primarily it's.
And what enforcement value, once it's approved, and that's the town's approved plan, what enforcement value does that have for anybody proposing to do something?
I'm not sure enforcement value is the right term. I think it would be.
I'm not sure either, but you know what I mean. Do people have to adhere to the plan?
It's not necessarily a regulatory-type plan, it is aspirational. So similar to the local comprehensive plan. These are the objectives and actions that the town wants to take in order to increase the amount of conservation of open space, but also make our current recreational spaces more accessible and include additional numbers of, right? So it's a vision plan for the next seven years.
So the three boards should be well aware of it.
Yes. And so, once the final plan is approved, we will provide you a copy, a final copy of it.
Right, and maybe a walkthrough?
Exactly, I was just thinking.
For the ZBA and the select board. People who would be making decisions that would actually, you know, get some adherence.
Yeah.
Okay, great. More?
Yes, so today we just received our draft wayfinding plan from the Cape Cod Commission. So we'll be going through that plan in, you know, fine detail, making sure that they've incorporated all of our comments to date. And so we anticipate having a final plan likely mid-March, so we're excited about that. And, of course, we're working on a number of zoning changes for the November town meeting. And so those are some of the things I wanted to bring up under the future agenda item category, because there are a slew of potential zoning amendments that we may want to consider in the near future. So obviously, we're working on that. And then the last item is, we're looking for, and I think we found a potential grant source, grant funding source for LCP update. So I anticipate us submitting an expression of interest to the One Stop for Growth program to ask for a monetary amount that would get us started on an update of our LCP.
That's excellent news, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, nice.
Hard to work.
Okay, committee reports. So we really miss Paul.
Well, do I talk about the rec, the rec. committee here as well?
Yeah.
Well, last night, the rec. director, Julie Tinkum, presented the need for new fees for summer camp and pickleball use, and it was approved at last night's select board meeting. That's it.
Okay. I'm not sure this is actually a committee report, it's more of a continuing interest. You know, this board initiated planning for bringing some sort of regulations around short-term rentals here in Falmouth, and it moved on to the select board. The select board received from the town manager, I believe, last night, a draft of the charge to the new task force, I don't know what they're going to call it.
Committee.
The new committee on short-term rentals. It's to be a seven-person board committee, and several of the seats are ascribed to a select board member and to a member of the public and so forth, so that some of the seats are already there. There is not a seat there for a planning board member.
There is.
There is.
May I read from the draft?
Please.
Document? It was in the select board packets. So it says, "The composition of the committee shall be as follows: one member of the select board, one member of the planning board, one member of the board of health, one licensed realtor, and two at-large members who are registered voters of the town of Falmouth."
Wow, the fire in my hair just got put out.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so that's a good report.
Can you go over that again, the two?
Will you read it?
Yeah, just, I got the planning board, all the ones, but the open ones.
Oh, so it was one licensed realtor after the board of health, and then two at-large members who are registered voters of the town of Falmouth.
Okay.
So essentially, anyone, as long as you're a registered voter.
Okay.
Yep.
So importantly, if I may, I'll just go on the next sentence, it says, "The select board, planning board, and board of health shall each select their appointees from among their members, and the remaining members shall be selected and appointed by the select board in accordance with select board policies." So.
Is there a deadline?
There doesn't appear to be one here, but I think it may be warranted to put it on for a future agenda item?
Right.
That you would select.
Okay. Okay. The correspondence we have seen here, it's right here in your packet, about the CPTC annual conference. How many of you were really stymied as to what CPTC is? Or did we already know? Uh-uh.
We see this every year.
Thought it was a Russian.
Okay, so tell us what it is.
It's just a training package that they do around site for all the different things going on planning.
Okay, this is the Citizens Planning and Training Commission, I guess.
Collaborative.
Collaborative.
But it's usually made up of a bunch of, Judy Barrett, other people we see all the time, it's basically the planning community running training programs.
It is the planning community.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, I didn't know what the letters mean, but we're, I'm very familiar with.
With what it is.
Look at the names there.
Yeah.
You see every.
Well, we see our own Tom Bott.
I also saw Judy Barrett on just about every single one.
And a number of them, yeah.
Oh, she was before my time.
It's on the Ides of March.
But anyway, our town planner and assistant town planner are planning to go. It's only one day, and it's right up there near Worcester, so it wouldn't be difficult for people to go, and I think it looks interesting. So of course, it's our own $95 if we want to do it. We don't have a.
You're both going to be gone out of the office the same day? Jeez.
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday.
Oh, it's a, oh, okay.
They're giving the town a Saturday.
Oh, yeah, it says right there, Saturday. Okay.
Right.
Right. But I think that there's a lot of.
I would have given you the day off, you know.
There's a lot of good sessions here, up to that one day, so I'd encourage folks to attend, and, you know, selfishly, I'm going to attend so I can get my CM credits, but also learn.
It can't be avoided, you could learn.
Yeah.
Anyway, it looks like a good day.
Yeah.
I'm going to take that one home with me.
Never can tell.
We didn't get any general correspondence.
Nope.
Oh, you wanted the future agenda items, so Tom said he had a few.
Oh, sorry, because we've been collecting them. Any other future agenda items that we want?
Just my housing brainstorming session.
Well, yeah, you know what, we could, in fact, the housing brainstorming session?
Yeah.
Healy's Task Force Report. Did you see it?
No, I haven't seen it yet.
A report on it?
No.
Let's do.
Where can I get a copy of that?
I saw it in The Globe, Pat saw it in the Cape Cod Times.
I haven't seen it yet, but I'm sure we can find it for you. We can send it to you via email or.
It'd be great if you could.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we can email it to you.
If the legis, well, we can discuss it then.
You know, I would like to have some insight on it too, because a few years ago, there were some radical changes on how the state approves housing issues that really impacted the real estate industry, and how the two-thirds vote went away from town meeting.
Yeah.
And a lot of, you know, there's some huge changes. I wondered, is this, and it was reported to us that it was, no, it was going to pass, there was huge support for it, and we really, really wasn't worth fighting, and that was the case. It won by a landslide.
Mm-hmm.
But it was a pretty big change. I'd like to get some feedback on how serious this is, because this is even more dramatic if, what I've just heard a little bit of. I mean, like, we have plenty of two- or three-acre zoning in this town. What's it going to go down to, 20,000 square feet?
Well, we'll get it when we see exactly what has been proposed, but this is really, the way I read it, it's a huge step of the state lifting off of local, local rule on most of their land use issues, lifting it up to the state. Big, big, big change.
Taking it away is another way of saying the same thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So it will be very important to follow.
I guess I want to know if it's worth arguing about, if it's a done deal, I'll just forget about it, but.
Yeah, we'll spend some time reading it too.
I'd like to have an understanding, because the last time there was this drastic, you know, our board said, "Don't bother fighting it, there's 99% of the people are going to vote for it," and it was, it was really a done deal.
I doubt that that will be true for this one. I really doubt it.
Because we've got problems that cannot be solved. We've got sewage problems, we've got water problems.
Oh, I agree.
You can't do this kind of thing here and still maintain any viability for the Cape.
Well, that'd be the practical problems, but that you don't want to do it is going to be the overwhelming screaming. Every suburb in Massachusetts is going to park.
Yeah, we're impacted a lot more too, because how much waterfront we have.
Right.
And conservation area.
Okay, so that's a future agenda item.
So, if I may, I just wanted to go over some of the future agenda items that we have on file.
Right.
So we've got the housing brainstorming session. Part of that, I guess, could involve a discussion about ADUs, its impact on our zoning bylaw, and some of the changes that we anticipate having to make because of the changes with the ADUs, so we can get into that at a future time. Some of the other items that folks have approached me personally about were tiny homes and the impact that the seasonal community designation might have with.
Impact of what?
Seasonal.
The seasonal community.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the starter home bylaw. So that is Mass General Law, Chapter 40Y. So that, again, it's a similar version of 40R-ish in its sort of skeleton, but we can get into it at a later date. But those are some of the housing initiatives that we could probably have during that discussion. We've also got TDR, so you wanted to talk about that. I've got lighting standards.
Yep.
Parking, and then, of course, the snow plowing and trash pickup. So that's our list of future agenda items that we're aware of. If we miss anything, let us know.
Something that we might want to contemplate is, that's quite a list we've built up.
It is.
Yeah. And the way meetings go, by the time we get to the discussion items, everybody's kind of ready to call it a night.
Yeah.
I wonder if we want to, remember, we discussed long ago that we would have an extra meeting if we felt we really needed one? Do you think that we should be scheduling an extra meeting this spring to get going on this list?
I would like to have a meeting where we do just discuss things that are on our future agendas without all the other business that goes on.
Yeah.
I like to deal with them all at one time, yeah.
Yeah, because I think the top priorities are the housing and the transfer of development rights, because we've been talking about TDRs for 15 years at least.
And not getting to it. John, you're the only person not signaling an answer.
I think I have a different view on housing than some of the other people on the board, so.
That's why it's good to have you here and part of the discussion.
Of course. So we'll discuss this, we'll discuss.
The discussion right now is, should we have an extra meeting where we have only discussion?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay?
Of course.
Good.
So just up that avenue is the fact that your next meeting, there are no active applications for you.
Oh.
So March 11th, right now, we have nothing on the agenda.
Well then.
So it could be an opportunity to roll up your sleeves.
It looks like a setup. Too smooth. That was a little too smooth.
Who wants to do some reading?
Well, you'd be up to speed on the state's housing productions plan or whether this term is.
Yes, yes.
Because it's pretty intensive.
I mean, I will do my best to summarize everything within this list.
Yeah, and if we get that report beforehand, too.
Right, I mean.
Maybe some things. I don't know about all of the things, we might be here until midnight.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do all of them, but.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Of course, something could come in, you know?
The only thing that could come in that you'd be able to hear is an A and R. Because that's the only thing that would fit that timeframe.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, then. We're good.
Did you ask whether there were announcements? I don't remember.
I didn't yet. Oh, okay. Right. Are there announcements?
I don't have any.
In that case.
Paul's not here.
An motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Wait a minute.
Mr. Harris, can I just, is, did I miss my time? Or is it the general question from the public? I came in two minutes late.
Oh, I'm sorry. In fact, I've wondered about that.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, come ahead.
He missed it, but I think we should. He's been sitting there for an hour to.
And it was very interesting, actually. A few of the details, I didn't need to hear them.
Come up to the podium.
Come right here.
You need to come to the mic.
And you need to give your name and your topic.
Okay, great.
My name is Tom Digness. I'm actually a town member from, from District, Precinct 3 out in Acapescot area. And my, my question is really precipitated from what Mr. Fox started talking about tonight.